Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the October 23rd, 2025 Rockingham County Board of Commissioners meeting. We hear the bells chirping and chiming, so it means we're right on time. I call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise from the fudgeboard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, on Zoom, we'll start in Zoom. I see Pat Conway and Mike Coche. Okay, in the Board of Commissioners room, we have all three Board of Commissioners. We have Allison Tombarolo. We have Jason Henry. We have a couple representatives from Sedexo. I can't tell, Jerkona just stepped down, Katie Casey, Jude Gates, and Leila Matilla.
Well, the Zoom user that you let in.
We also have a Zoom user.
I'm questioning because it seems anonymous.
I'd say that. Do you like, would you, can they put in chat? If they want to identify themselves, they can.
Oh, they can't talk anything.
Yeah, until it's released.
Okay, that's fine.
You want me to ask, Tony?
No, no, I think it's not for me, but.
Hi, this is, it's your Zoom user. It's, I'm an Exeter resident, just thought I'd tune in.
Well, thank you for joining us today.
You're welcome. I'm gonna.
All right. Now that we're going to move right to our people openings and awards, first, we have an opening for the fire alarm testing in facilities operations.
I'll make a motion, authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposal in terms of the recommendation.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Tombarolo.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the opening for the convection oven and long-term care services.
I'll make a motion, authorize the senior director of long-term care services to review and evaluate the proposal in terms of the recommendation.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tombarolo. And I vote yes. Next, we have the award for institutional products and maintenance in facilities operations.
I'll make a motion, award the proposals for institutional products and rooms to the following vendors for two-year term ending September 30, 2027, as recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and IT. First one would be standard textile for environmental services supplies for the mountain upriver seat, $25,165 annually. While Baca, where apartment correction supplies for the mountain upriver seat, $14,500 annually. And last, Victor Supply for the apartment corrections for the mountain upriver seat, $5,000 annually.
Second.
Just a point of clarification, it's Victor. I think you said, it sounded like Victor, but I'm sure you said victory. Survive for the third one. Discussion. I just, and thank you for the spreadsheet with all the details of the vendors and pricing. A number of these vendors we've used previously and had to, with success in the relationship, so. And it's all in the budget. Any other discussion?
It was, well, yeah.
Laid out.
Blame, yeah.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Tombarolo.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next. Next, we have the award and contract approval for the document management system and human resources.
I'll make a motion, award the proposal for document management systems to Square Nine Soft Works and Simquest Group Inc. for a three-year term as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Discussion. We had talked about this previously, we're just circling, we're getting some ducks in a row with respect to the contract.
Yeah, do we, did they, everybody agree to the changes?
We went back and forth, and we did a summary that was submitted than they did.
There was a couple of things about arbitration and location, but it's all, it's all.
I saw the changes, I didn't know. It wasn't clear if everybody agreed at the end.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Good.
Okay, on the, any, with any other discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tombarolo, and I vote yes. Next, we have a second related motion.
Motion, award the contract with Square S, Square Nine Soft Works and Simquest Group Inc. for a three-year term that includes the annual subscription fee of $29,400 and one-time implementation cost of $12,250 in the first year and a 3% annual increase starting at year four and authorize short assignment on this document as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Discussion. This is tied to our previous discussion. And, yeah, I think all of the terms seem like they're well-betted, so thank you for taking the time to do that.
Thank you for letting me do that.
Yeah, and it's in the budget.
Thank you, yes.
Allison, Allison's very happy.
You've been asking for that for several years, haven't you?
Last three years, but we really weren't ready. So this gave me time to really look at things and talk to Rob, and Rob was a critical part of this. So I'm sorry, just to come here, but I want to thank her for that, too, because she was a good partner in this.
Thank you, Allison. And, yeah, it's, again, we did discuss, we had it in the budget for this year, so it's going to work out really well. Commissioner Tombarolo.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're moving right into the consent agenda, and first, we have some meeting minutes to approve.
Make a motion, approve the September 18th to 25, 2025, and September 25th, 2025, public and on public routes.
Second.
Discussion. Thank you, Leila, do you have anything, Commissioner Godu?
No, it was very well done. I was happy with us. Thank you.
On the motion. Thank you. Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tombarolo? And I vote yes. Next, we have a Rock Remin Co-op Water Infrastructure Community Development Block Grant Time Extension request.
Make a motion, approve a time extension for the first of the development block grant. Rock Ramon Co-op Water Infrastructure with a new completion date of August 1st, 2026 as requested by GSA Environmental Consultants LLC, not as shared a sign on necessary documents.
Second.
Discussion.
I am just curious, I'm assuming this is okay, but does this new deadline comply with the block grant rules? You know, is there a time restriction that we're doing all right with that? I mean, I have no objection, but we wouldn't want somebody to lose funding if.
I believe it is. That's why we have to, if we approve the extension, then, then it'll, like, we're essentially saying, we permit. There's not, I don't think there's, like, strict timelines for use of money, like ARFA in that respect.
Right, right.
The extension is just a product of weather conditions as we're moving into the winter. Digging and paving, and I think what they're, they anticipated even to just finish up the project or the paving in, like, June.
And it was submitted by Donna Rayner, CDBG consultant.
Oh, sure.
Amazing, yeah.
Is the expert.
Thank you, Leila.
That solidifies it. Good, thank you.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Tombarolo. Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the October 24th, 2025 payroll.
I'll make a motion, approve the payroll expense of $1,655,300, $1,655,351.26 for the period ending October 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Discussion.
Very close to previous weeks.
How did, I know there were some challenges with payroll this week due to a migration issue with, but it all came together. I know. So, thank you, Katie, please pass on the thank you to your team. It was a technology snafu, not a manpower snafu. I know, no, 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 it really was. It was like an issue with two different, the migration from, and the integration of two programs. So, anyway, thank you for still getting it done.
It's a nail-biter.
But, you know, I'm sure everybody appreciates getting.
Getting paid.
Anyway, on the, any other further discussion? Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tombarolo? And I vote yes. Great, we're moving right into reports, first commissioners' updates.
I'll chime in. Last night, we had a years of service. I want to call it thank you rather than awards, because we're really thanking people for being loyal to us for longer periods of time. And there was 30, 35 years of service at the, at the county. And thank you, Allison, for doing the wonderful job at coordinating the event. Food was great. Atmosphere was great. I think it was a success, and it was a nice thank you to everybody who attended.
Great town, Sandown. And by the way, I am younger than the sheriff.
He doesn't think, he doesn't think so. We're gonna have to talk about that.
I got my license.
Yeah, I think it is worth mentioning, first of all, I think you stated it perfectly, Commissioner Godu. It was a wonderful event, Allison, thank you to your team. I think everyone enjoyed it. A special acknowledgement to Sheriff Maseas, who got his 35-year pin for service, so that's pretty remarkable. And we did have a number of individuals, I always, every year we go to this event, and I'm just blown away at the number of individuals we have celebrating 20, 25, 30, 35. It is just remarkable, and it speaks to people's loyalty to the, you know, Rockingham County community as well as to our, our community as a whole. So, we, I said it last night, these are, these, you know, employees are the heart of Rockingham County, and we appreciate everybody's effort so much. So, it's nice to have a night to celebrate them, to say thank you, and to celebrate them for their dedication.
I had talked, I had talked to the two new electricians that wrote fixing the light bulbs. I said, you guys have hot tubes to fill. You just send an electrician that lives here after 40 years. And the guy said, well, I'd be 111 if I was him.
There's a, we are celebrating a resident today for her 104th birthday, so anything's possible. It might be a short walk to bed at night.
It would be nice if we had, like, a cane. You know, like, sometimes some of these towns have a cane for the old.
We've had a resident in my time here that was the oldest in front of theirs, and they received the cane from here.
Or that, yeah.
Should we do the same for the commissioners, for the oldest commissioners?
Like, younger than. Any other, does anybody have anything else to share? Without that, we'll transition to our guest from Sedexo here to join us today. We're a discussion about, we're going to talk about the vending or getting outside vending catering, that's right.
So, thanks for letting us talk to you guys today to understand kind of what's the best solution. We have it budgeted, it's all in the proposal. Just, we had some questions as to how you want catering kind of set up and which one around it. So I'll ask a series of questions, and that'll try to dictate which way we go with the right solution or the technology that'll go along with that. So, I guess the first question I would ask is, like, from a budgeting perspective, my understanding is current prior, you did not really allocate the catering expense for different departments to the department. That all resided within the dietary department budget and then under the health center. I guess my first question would be, do you want to put a process where you can allocate those expenses to the individual cost centers when they order it?
Yes. I mean, I, I'm sorry, I don't need to speak to this, but I think, I mean, what we would like to do is, and I think the challenge to some extent where we are right now is that not all the departments budgeted have a line item in the budget. But what we, I think I speak for the collective, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that when we going forward, would like to put the infrastructure in to have those, have it itemized to a.
Human resources order something that's in their budget.
Correct. And then we'll also be able to have the historical trends to understand what that's going to be, so.
It's helpful, right, for budgetary planning, particularly if you're like, every year we do, you know, 10 private organizations.
Yeah, exactly, or whatever.
You see that as best practice. I mean, that's typically what happens in a lot of our partnerships, is they allocate that department, so. The next one's kind of a build on that step.
Yeah.
So, do you want, so that their manager or their, the person overseeing that area, it goes to them for purpose? So I put in a catering into the system, it's going to be charged to my cost center, but before it even goes to the kitchen to fulfill, it would go to their person, their direct, who they directly report to, to say, yes, I'm good with that.
Yes, I think so, because they're in charge of their budget.
Right.
They want that.
Absolutely.
Now, the next ones, these get a little more, we could do with either system, right? This, that's kind of dictated what system we're going to go with. We'll probably go with cater tracks because it allows for, and that's the one that was in the proposal, was that allows the approval process. Now, the next step is, is do you, from a menuing perspective, you want us to come up with an approved menu? We could work with everyone to propose a menu to say, this is your menu. We can always do custom type of things, but as a general rule, these are our, these are the, this is our base menu. This is where we're going to work from, so when you order bottled water, those types of things, this is what we're going to get, not always all the one-off. And if you want us to do that, that we have multitude of menus, we'll build one specifically for that makes sense for you, because there could be certain things that we want. I would think that you'd want a menu just as a starting point to try to lead people down the path of, hey, this is the most economical or best friendly solution. But then, when you look at the pricing, I'm actually kind of, I thought about this more, is that you may want to propose two different pricings. Internal pricing, like, at cost, here's what the price is for a bottle of water, it's 72 cents. That's what you get charged, 72 cents. And then external, do you want to mark that up? So let's say someone comes, a pharmaceutical company says, hey, we want to host an event, you approve for that event, we're done. We gotta use our catering, but does that get marked up? And to include any kind of residual labor or servers or things of that nature to allow you to charge the right price? So I see Kate shaking her head.
I mean, I, what I see, where I see this being most relevant, especially with the new building, we're gonna, you know, and I'm going to be utilizing this service myself perhaps, which is like, we hope you have a, some sort of seminar or event at the auditorium, you want to use catering services, but I think we, you know, I think there should be some sort of markup for, you know, external.
And what I'll do is, I'll build, we'll build in late, extra labor. So like, let's say you have a cert buffet, that would be at an hourly cost per hour, so that there was a, it's a neutral. Thus, and then maybe we mark up the food a little bit to cover the cooks and things of that nature that are having to produce that. Do you have an Intranet, like an internal internet for all the staff or staff members?
It's not particularly an Intranet. We have our own.
There's a lot of times we can kind of put one pricing on the Intranet and then one on the Internet, right? It's like, internal versus external, right, okay. We can both, maybe, maybe it's just like a simple login.
You know. Oh, go ahead.
I have a question for the catering, just for clarification while we're here. We have families that'll throw birthday parties or things, and will sometimes utilize catering for, like, drinks or pastries or a couple odds and ends. However you choose to, just so that we would know on our side if it would be pasta or if it would be.
I don't think we should mark up for our residents, my position, that this is like.
It's rare.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to understand, the, the cost for the catering will be food costs plus labor costs? It's really the total cost? Is that what we're proposing for?
I would propose to you, yes.
We, I, I think we haven't gotten to that question.
Oh, okay.
The question, and I think you're, but it's important to think about that in the whole, which is, so there's that, including whole cost, right? I think we're on the same.
Internal, yeah. Provide clarity, so internal. So if you do an HR meeting or an orientation, that will just be the raw food cost, no markup, no labor. Right. We would only start to look at labor if there was a larger event, that we had the staff or something like that. We had to have four or five people, right, serving or something, but we talk about that first.
So you don't think it's significant for the labor if it's just a simple, we're dropping off 50 sandwiches?
Right. It's a drop-off, it's a drop-off, there's really going to be no additional cost to that, because we've utilized the staff that we have, that we're not bringing in. Anytime where we bring in additional staff to handle it, that's what, yes. But that would be a discussion prior, and I would put that in there, if that makes sense. There's not a lot of it, but like, you know, if we had two days where there were, if, you know, five events, 50 sandwiches each, we might have to bring in somebody, right? But we didn't work through that kind of on an individual basis.
Yeah, that's untypical, we.
But the labor cost, you know, picking out the fact that maybe you might, if you don't need an additional body, then the labor cost still, but is still going to long-term care, you're not able to apportion it even for time.
If you want us to, we can. I could put a, this is the cost, and then we could use a percentage to say, let's mark it up, X dollars.
Because that's sort of your point, Commissioner Godu, which is like, we, I think we should be.
The real cost.
The real cost, so I think if it's not super complicated on your end, we should be putting both labor.
Yeah, we just lay a percentage against it. A lot of times, you're trying to work within the 5 cents, 10 cents, full dollar, not, you know, 32 cents or something like that. So, what we'll do is, we'll get something together so that we can send it, if we need to present it, that's fine. So that we can look at it and we'll see what that would be. I think it's a really great prime, it follows the best practice and I'll put us in a position where we really know what catering is as an organization, not Sedexo or Rockingham, but all of Rockingham. I understand what that's going to be.
And then, we're going back to the second issue, Commissioner Godu, what we were talking about is with respect to internal versus external. So, if, you know, if, like, someone is using the auditorium next door and wants to get catered food there, right, as part of their use of space.
Probably should be a little markup in there.
That's what we were saying, is to have some markup, because there's going to be costs, we might not pour entire, like, the cleanup cost and things like that, we want to recoup some of those things through, if there, we have.
They're going to bring it over there, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's the part that I was wondering, are you going to be able to move from the kitchen over here and bring it over across the street to the new building?
Depends on the frequency, so there's going to be different solutions. If it's a one-off, that's pretty much somebody will get, will figure out a way to get it over there. It's going to be consistent, then we may have to talk to a long-term solution. But right now, I think it'll probably start infrequently, and then we'll just work through a solution in time.
Yeah.
But if it becomes a lot, then it becomes a different solution, long-term solution. We have a food van that we can.
I was just going to say.
We have a food vehicle that we could. We had to sense, maybe it's just not, it's not that often we can.
Well, at least once every quarter, when they have the delegation come in, they're going to want catering numbers. I think the delegation is going to pay out of their budget, right, for that.
It goes all the way to the ground?
But it's going to, that's across the screen.
Well, you'll have even to the stomach extent, even like, let's say someone wants rentals. That's going to, we'll order the rentals and we'll have the rental, but you shouldn't have to rock and pay for that. That should be charged for that event.
For sure.
And we'll have a line on there for rentals, and this is the rental bill. This will, you know, you may, we may want to say, you know, for definition perspective, for internal versus external, if you're a resident, you live in the building, or you're, have a cost center that's related to Rockingham, then we're a Rockingham internal pricing. If you're going any other route, you're external and it's 20% up or whatever on that perspective. So I think this gives us a good, a roadmap in which to build everything out, and we'll start to work on that and be able to redo that. You probably would, I'll be happy with that.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Thank you. And, yeah, I mean, I guess then the next, who should be, who do we want to use as a point of contact?
I would look at some direct.
Look at who is the word.
Yeah, well, no.
I meant from on your end.
Oh, on my end? It'll be Rich and I, we'll take the lead on that one. Until we get it kind of ironed out, and then that way, we're working through it. I'll be pulling in our resources as well, but I think for your point of contact would be us.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
That it?
That was it.
Please.
How do you guys like it? How's it going, good, bad?
You know.
It's been a great journey. I mean, it, it really has, everyone's been really helpful. I, yeah, there's always bumps in the beginning of the road, but we work through them, but the partnership is there. The relationships are there, we're building them each time. I mean, I have great relationship, we, we talked about it. A problem's a problem, right? And we talk through a solution, we work through that solution, we try it. Some work, some don't, if that one doesn't work, we move on to the next, but it's been really great. You guys have been great partners with everything that we're going through. I think the biggest aha moment to all of us, and I speak for Chantel and Jason and everyone, there were things that you just don't know, and then you're like, wow, okay, well, let's figure that out, right? You know, and we figure out a solution, we fix the problem, we move on to the next one. And, and that's kind of normal, that's, you know, I hate to under, I'm not downplaying it, but at the same time, there's a lot of things that you kind of go through. You know, the staff's learning to be accountable, finding out what that means, and you have to show up for work, and you have to come in in a uniform, and don't smoke here, and with some basics that we would have thought were in place, but it's okay, we'll manage through it, you know, we'll get through it. So, you know, we're getting there. Hopefully, you know, biggest challenge right now has probably been staffing from an hourly staffing perspective. And we have, we have a job fair next week we're going to, that I'm coming up for, we're going to go to that. We're just finding the right solution. So, instead of just hiring a body, I think it's putting the right person, people in play, and starting to behave as Rockingham employees that work under, get paid by Sedexo versus someone separate. We always say we're as good as our last meeting, right? So we got to do that three times a day, seven days a week, and, you know, to Brett's point, I think everything Brett said is spot on. We're always going to put bumps along the way, but, you know, we'd say this, whether Jason and Chantel were here, the partnership has been phenomenal, where you can just be transparent, right? And there's listening, and it's together, and there's motivation, and that's, that's really what we ask for, because then it's key, and you can work through things quicker, and you can do it, and it keeps, the people that we serve, it keeps them at the heart of what we do then. You know what I mean? So they're not getting hung up in, how do you navigate, or how do you go around internal politics? We're actually feeding people, which is a great thing, whether they're, you know, in the nursing home or in the, in the jail, so. I did have one question for you, when is the new building opening? Do we have an ET?
November 17th.
It's the 17th or 15th?
It's the 17th.
It's the 17th.
We're going to start, I have most of the Parkinson's.
You should bring that up on a new.
The conception of the.
Clarify that.
20 OC is not going to be for a few months.
And are you going to need any catering for this?
No, it's.
Do you have the catering covered?
Yes, I have some officials.
We may have it covered, we had one of our vendors volunteer.
All right, so let's, let's.
Take care of it for us, but.
November 17th.
November.
With that being said, those we're talking about that day, I will go there, Commissioner Tombarolo, last night, but Prime Care is willing to cater that at no cost, they've done it for several other places that have openings. I just need your eyes as blessing, if you guys want to do that, or you, or you want something else, so.
Or if Sedexo wants to do it.
Yeah. So, I just, whatever you guys, but Derek, when he's up with his visit from Prime Care, he said, listen, we do it for other places, and we'd be happy to do it.
Great. Yeah, I'll just let me know.
Okay.
How many people for the ribbon cutting usually, roughly?
Usually.
Last one was 50 years ago.
There's like a number of factors, right? Because we've been fighting, you know, we have to get our CO before we're going to do a ribbon cutting. So that has sort of been, you know, moving target, which then delays the announcement of the ribbon cut. I suspect that we could have, I mean, the, the question is how many of the delegation members will attend as well as.
That's how good the catering is.
I guess it depended, my next question was going to be, what's the catering look like for this? I, you know, I don't know.
We were.
We haven't really discussed it yet.
Yeah, I think generally we were thinking of something very, like, sort of understated, but, you know.
Cake, pastry, stuff, thing, coffee.
We could get to November 7th and have to order 100 pizzas down the street.
I think that we will be in contact about this in short order. We have to figure out, we certainly, I think in, within today's meeting, we're going to have discussions about finalizing the date, finalizing the time, which will also dictate the type of catering that will take place. And hopefully, we'll lock that in today so that we can send out invitations and get a sense of what the, how many people will be attending.
Perfect, thank you so much. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
One request.
Sure.
So how quickly can we get this going? Because there's an executive committee tomorrow.
They already have that catering arranged for tomorrow.
I connected Kate just to make sure from the conversation and I already connected them, but.
So did Cheryl order catering? She did, and it's already coordinated. I was just reviewing it with the, with Rich this morning.
Chantel was like right on it and I was like, I gave the blessing because I thought this is. Things that we needed.
We all agree.
Yeah, yeah.
Catering and chairs. But I know from past conversations the board had kind of shared that and during budgeting, it was a.
We wanna separate the departments.
Bridge lift for her, so I wanted to make sure it was still.
Thank you.
Yes for her to be able to do it because I knew that this wouldn't be done in time for department.
Anticipate. Thank you.
But we have a lot of stuff built already, like we have catering menus built, we probably just need to look at them and tweak them for geography and things like that, so let us get on that, we'll, we'll engage catering tracks, we'll get back to them. Isn't that?
And, yeah, I mean, I guess I think. From my perspective, if you can send us some base menus, we'd actually, you know, it'd be nice for us to get all of the department heads. Involved in the, you know, looking at those menus and making a decision collaboratively because they're.
Well, and the other piece too is it's just the base menu, doesn't mean that we can't customize menu for. Uh, a special meeting or that nature, so I would always put any menu we put in place, we can still do something. Right, uh, because there's always that one event that's off. It will change, it will change periodically, we'll, so. And then I guess my last, I had one other question was related around the holidays. So, do you do any giveaway of turkeys, hams, or anything of that nature?
We have done like pies, not pies.
Okay.
We have done like.
So if, if that's something you wanna move forward with, let me know.
Okay.
I would, I was really trying to avoid any turkeys because I will tell you is that turkeys right now. We looked at pricing yesterday. Is running four dollars and eighty cents a pound. Um, so, uh, if you didn't buy your turkey at home, buy it now. Um, but, uh, even for work, like we're looking at a case of turkeys is probably two hundred and forty dollars and that's two turkeys.
We originally looked at turkeys before, I've kind of looked at different things, but we did do pies. Uh, but then they kind of escalated the former grouping, not this one, but so I'd be interested in.
Yeah, we can do a basic, you know, we can talk about what kind of, how you wanna do, you know, I, we're gonna do apple and pop, I'm gonna. Yes, I mean, those are easy enough to come in and rebox them away and then. Well, we'll get some press off of it, let's get a Rockhampton sticker and stick on it.
Yeah. That's lovely. I, people love the, I mean, that was like a big, I, you know, I hope we can, we have.
I'll get your price together and I'll send over.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the time to come in, we appreciate it, uh, you know, you talked about the, you know, collaboration and we appreciate it for saying.
Thank you. Steve, have a good day. Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Bye. We're nice.
Okay, let's.
Uh, I just comment that the, uh. Sheriff won't be here today, he's got an event and Raymond, uh, I was told that they're diligently. Getting up to speed with the new software and it's a lot of work, but it's going well.
I can speak to it just from the police department perspective, stuff like some of the, there, it is a lot of work to try to make sure things migrate and, um. Move.
Some of the smaller. Apartments outside of the county seem to be struggling a little bit, but I think they'll come along.
A lot of complicating factors with especially like the J one module, which is more technical than anybody needs here, but, uh, with respect to getting information. A module that allows information to, uh, get to the court as well as, um. Being able to look at, um. Sort of things before the pro-sweetland, the live.
Right.
All being worked through, like everything else, when you move to, when you transition, there's, uh, both a learning curve and some. Big ups to get.
Yeah, we have a lot of new software this year.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we have, next we're moving on to the Department of Corrections for an inmate administrative transfer.
Motion to approve an inmate, we have a current state of the intent, uh, say thirty to fee colon twenty-one. Needed October twenty, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-three, one inmate to follow us. County, we see the one is.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, uh, Commissioner Tom Barello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have an, uh, Sedexo off-cycle A P warrant.
Motion for the October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, county payable warrant, T twenty-six, oh, four sixty, payable to Sedeco for the month. Uh, forty-eight thousand eight hundred and four dollars and seventeen cents recommended by the senior director of finance.
Second.
Discussion.
Today's really working, but I got my hair and ate and my eyes are working, this is.
Um, what's the.
This is for some management fees relative to this upstart of the contract.
Cause we had another, uh, invoice that was around close to. Four hundred and something.
The one, there's been a few, we had the July one that we did. And then, then we need tweets, there's one, we're still working through tweets on the, this is just the D M C. Yeah.
This is just the what?
Corrections.
Oh, that's what this is right here.
This is, I thought it was the.
How much is it?
Forty-eight thousand.
For August?
I thought it was a management fee. My wrong.
The just higher for us?
Uh, Rockhampton County Corrections, forty-eight thousand, eight oh four. Uh, for a thousand meals.
Oh.
Yeah, that's your.
There it is. Okay.
Now I know, I just see, might as well do that before, isn't it?
We've got something, I.
Okay.
Okay.
Long-term care will be next.
Um, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barello, and I vote yes. We have the courthouse lease off-cycle A P warrant.
Make a motion to approve the October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, accounts payable warrant, T twenty-six. Oh, 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 seven payable to the state of New Hampshire. Uh, on administrative services for the month of November, leased space in the court, county courthouse, amount. Of sixteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and nine cents recommended by the senior director of finance.
Second.
Discussion.
This is one, this is one extra one and our last payment.
I wanna say final.
This is the last one.
Paid in full.
Yes.
I, I, I guess maybe Pat can chime in on this, um. Relative to this, have we settled on how much, do we have a formal agreement for using the? Three rooms, the closing rooms for, uh. For our county attorneys at the courthouse? Was like five thousand for the year or something like that, I don't know. Pat, could you?
Hang on.
Just one second, Pat.
Go ahead, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I reached out to Sarah, um, a couple of days ago to find that out because initially she had given me. The price what we were gonna need to pay and said that she would get it confirmed by the state. She never got back to me, um, and I, so I reached out to her and said, you know. Is this final? Is it not final? What's going on? She hasn't gotten back to me yet, but I will continue to bug her until she gets back to me.
Okay, so that's still open ended right now.
As far as I know, I know Chuck has been talking with her about the. Extending the lease here in, into November, so I don't know if it's come up at all with you, Chuck.
Chuck's not here today.
I talked to Chuck.
Oh, he's not, okay.
It's on his radar, but it hasn't been done yet, okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Pat. Yep. Okay, on the, uh, motion, Commissioner Tom Barello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have an exception request for a seven-point rate, new appointment rate for facilities operations.
Make a motion to approve an exception request to personal policy, seven dash three, new appointment rate. For facilities operation, full K A. As recommended by the senior director of the new resources.
Second.
Discussion.
Nope, straight ahead.
Great. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barello?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a general relief request for Department of Corrections.
Motion to approve a general leave request for the Department of Corrections employee J K. With the county portion of benefits to continue through the period. Of October fourteen, two thousand twenty-five, through November eight, two thousand twenty-five, as recommended by the superintendent and the senior director of the new resources.
Second.
Discussion. Uh, just looks like there, the one thing I'll say, um, oh no, it's fine. Hearing none, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Barello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Okay, we're moving right on to, uh, long-term care services. We have the Harmony Healthcare Institute Nursing Education Clinical Affiliation Agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the Harmony Healthcare Institute Nursing Education, clinical affiliation agreement affecting the delay. Execution, bringing without automatic, any rules for success of one-year periods, and authority to chair. Send all necessary documents recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second.
Discussion.
This is exciting. It is, I've worked with them for many years, I'm actually on the board. Excuse me, and it's to like clinically.
Yes, and so by bringing clinical trainings in here, it's, um, one, it's great because we have a great facility, but two, it's wonderful because. Um, it's one avenue as part of a recruitment tool. People come here, they do their clinicals, they do their training. They see what a great organization and facility they have.
Stay.
And they might stay, yeah, so, um, it's a great way, and for us, it's like we get to see. Uh, in terms of making job offers, we get to see, you know, who's a good fit for the, for the community.
Absolutely.
On the motion, Commissioner God, I'm sorry.
Leila had sent something on the link regarding. Liability that they solve that I M C. So lives and owners, please rep, uh, present the contract to board, they've accepted the firm access, but still do not have the liability into the contract.
I think that's the, uh, proof of insurance, right?
That's an alien question.
I don't know what I M C is, let me see.
Yeah, that's the certificate of insurance.
Oh, body certificate.
Yeah.
We milk that stuff.
I'm just back in there with them, I said, to send it along.
I just see it highlight.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, um, but it looks like there, there are four attachments to the email.
You okay?
Yeah.
Good question.
Not sure, they're clear, that's the action.
Did we get the certificate of insurance?
We did.
Great. Okay. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barello? And I vote yes. I'm sorry. Okay, we're gonna, uh, transition right into department head updates and we'll start out in June land.
When I see. Pat, when Kathy Stacey. Um, spark posts. Pat, why don't you, if you don't mind, do you wanna join us first?
Okay, um, we are super busy here, getting ready, number one, getting ready for our move, we're trying to get things packed up, um. Number two, the, just the work, I think, uh, Commissioner Corral and I talked about this last night, but things are just nuts. Uh, with people committing crimes, it seems to be an uptick of pretty much everything, so, um. We're super busy, I've been, this week alone, I went to Kingston P D, I went to Derry P D. To consult with them regarding investigations on, um, child sex abuse images and child exploitation and things like that. Um, we had two jury trials, uh, go on this week, one was a, a set, a drug case where mom was providing her son with drugs. Her teenage son, uh, she was convicted, so that's good. Um, we also have the negligent homicide trial going on right now of, um. The young man who was killed in Portsmouth when he was at the parking garage, um. There is a, basically a confrontation and. Unfortunately, he fell to his death, so that trial is probably gonna last at least a couple of weeks. I have three. Assistant county attorneys working on that case, um, and also an advocate, so. That's a big deal, I was just upstairs watching some of it and they're doing a great job. Um, so, we're really busy here, but excited to be moving into the new building. Um, myself and my office manager went over and my deputy county attorney went over last week, we met with Jude. Uh, and Robin, just to finalize certain things, and they've been really a great help for us and I appreciate all their work. Um, that they've put into this and we, we went upstairs and sort of determined where everybody's gonna be seated and where the workstations will be for each legal assistant. We plan to put together. A diagram, uh, for everybody here in the office so that they can look at it and see. Where they're gonna be located within the space before we actually move. Um. So, yeah, we're working on all of that and we're excited about it.
Thank you, Pat, it is for Chrissy talking and I know that this fall is gonna be particularly busy for you between your office, between trials and the move, but. Hopefully, uh, things will slip, settle down a little bit. Thank you.
There's twenty-six pages of initials, did you see those? Oh, okay.
I don't, uh, Kathy, welcome.
Oh, sorry. I'm dangerous.
Yeah, do you, I'm mute.
Hold on, no, it's Leila.
Okay, there we go, thank you, I appreciate it, um, so obviously it's busy, I'm sure, well Chuck isn't there today, but we've had some. Significant, uh, transactions, uh, just this week, one of which was o- over at the airport for, uh. Transfer tax was over five hundred thousand dollars, so, uh, we're pretty happy that we're ha- holding on to that for the rest of the month. And making interest off of it, but, uh, it's been busy, um, Becky and Bonnie and I went over and met with Jude and Robin today. They have been a godsend, they've been so helpful, um, so that we could determine who's sitting where, you know, where we need phones, where we need. Bookups for the computers, um, and we, my staff and I spent some time to try to set up. The, uh, plan room and the book room, so that's like our biggest. Right now, trying to maneuver everything so it fits properly, but anyway, we're, we're very excited about moving next month and we appreciate everything that, uh, everybody's doing, so thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, uh. Jude, take it away.
Good morning.
Yes, morning, as well, and facilities, I have a few report items, I wanted to remind you that, um, Fire Chief Bird is retired next week. Monday at the firehouse, there'll be, uh. Sort of a reception kind of thing from twelve to threes, anyone's invited to attend, I had a call about that yesterday. Thursday, they'll be giving him a drive home and they will drive him past the nursing home in case anybody. Wants to go out and wave goodbye, you know, you know, the thing that they do. So I wanted to make sure, remind you about that, it's happening next week.
Do you, do we have a time for Thursday?
Twelve o'clock.
Okay.
Yep, they said they should be right here by the right. So I think, um, I think someone in the nursing home was gonna put out a notice. She's really good to us.
What'd you say? We're gonna do. Um, but we have, um, we've been here in a.
So, that was that, um. We are deciding, posing in on the moving dates. At the new building, everyone's very excited, I think there is sort of like a, a, a little vassalition between excited and panic stricken, so. It's all coming through loud and clear at this point, but we're making really, really good progress, Robin is working like a crazy woman. Trying to make sure that everything's in place. Some of the, the, uh, the I T stuff, we're waiting for feedback from the vendors as well, so. W- w- we're flying through, we're getting there for sure, she's working crazy. Um. We, the solar operations and maintenance contract came back from prime next, sent to Allison, it is with revision right now. Because of the usual indemnification and. Whatnot, so as soon as they're done with it, with their legal folks reviewing it. We'll get it in front of you, but it is moving forward, it'll give us a lot more, um, proactive. View on the array, they'll help us to put the data on the county's website, so depending on what's, kind of see how the, how it's going. Things like that, so we're looking forward to putting it in place.
It's great.
Yeah, it is great.
What's the status of the C O? Do we have a status on that yet?
The final inspection, well, the inspection for conditional is next Thursday, the thirtieth. There were a couple of things, a couple of conditions, one of them was that the A D A signage be installed. And Harvey actually had a plan in place for temporary signage were necessary. When I went over there this morning, they were putting the signage up, so that, that's a huge piece of it. Um, the, the B D A, the bidirectional antenna system that they need for the fire department. We've, um, closed in on that, it's a hundred and eight grand, I think they reported that to you last week. And, um, been looking forward to that, ordering materials and building the two-hour. Fire protection and all of that. Fire protection and all of that, so.
We're anticipating a successful inspection next week, is that?
We are absolutely.
Temporary, too.
It, it'll be temporary because not absolutely, everything will be in place, however. Um, every, all of our inspections are complete. All of the trades, like cer- certifications have gone through. Everything's in place, but. The A D A signage, the, um, emergency communication for the. The limited use, limited access elevator, that elevator that just goes to the amphitheater, that won't be finalized next week. There are a few internet items that will be finalized, however, it won't stop us from, um, getting the temporary C O. And then we have ninety days to finish everything up, so it looks pretty good.
Right, especially if all of our mechanical inspections are complete.
Everything's gone through, right.
Those are the ones, so you're like.
Exactly, everything's gone through, yeah. They're, they're, they're hanging TVs for us now and sharps containers and. You know, things like that. They're really, they're really posing in on it. We did a walkthrough yesterday with building oversight committee and they were. So impressed, not just how beautiful it is, but that it looks so ready, even though it, like, you wouldn't know that it isn't move-in ready. Because they kept it so clean and tidy and.
The thing that I.
Yeah.
Me, every time I'm like, how are they keeping this place so?
They've done a remarkable job.
You gotta stay up with it with any building project, my gosh, the scale in the, like, I, it's.
Yep. Yeah, they were vocal about it. I thought it was kind of nice and it's absolutely tribute to Harvey. They maintain very high standard of everything now. So there's that, um, jail chiller is being replaced, the old chiller's coming off, the, the new one, it'll be a few weeks before it's finalized, but we're replacing the jail chiller. Um, the air hilt and units for Driscoll Building, N D three and N D five will be finalized next week. After that, they're gonna take off the initial unit. I need to talk to you guys about that before I let them shut it down. You'll be on heat only once they do that, so. Wanna make sure we're out of the A C season. Um. Other than that, as far as getting food into the amphitheater, there is no dock because the dock is only good for, for D O C. But Jason confirmed that his food van does have a lift gate that will go all the way to the ground, so they'll have to use. The D's county attorney entrance, because that's really. Yes, it just went down the hall, passed the gym, and I don't think it'll be overly tricky, but that is gonna be the only route, just so people know. If they've heard hot. Back wagons and stuff like that.
Just coordinate with us. I'm sure I can. You figure out the delivery order. There shouldn't be that much, uh, heavy lift for us.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Literally, you work through it, right?
Yeah.
Right there.
Cheryl, yes, she was saying that Gene Sharon, former state reverend, I think he was the superintendent.
He was the superintendent for a long, long time.
He toured the building yesterday.
He did. Yesterday, our focus was on the.
Talking, she sat at my table.
Oh.
We were talking about different people, I said. There's that Gene Sharon.
That's funny.
And she said, Tom, he was in the building yesterday.
He was.
So he's alive.
He is alive.
You know, he's old.
He's older.
Yeah.
He worked in the old, old jail, the one that we had demolished when he was a C O.
In the new building yesterday, I guess.
Yeah.
Cause he was part way, way back when we talked about, uh, the overcrowding of the jail.
For sure.
You know, history will show that nine to ten years ago, we talked about putting addition in the jail, we had three hundred inmates.
Right.
And we had a committee that started, and we committed former Christian Cora was part of it, and Gene Shannon was the state rep. We looked at putting a twenty-five million dollar addition on the jail.
Right.
Way, way back and he was on that committee.
Yeah, he was very impressed. Wasn't it sad? So, yeah.
That's right.
It's great. Thank you so much, Jude. Thank you for everything. It's like, I can't believe, but this has been, since this year, yeah.
Good stuff.
Do we wanna, um, I guess maybe we'll do a take it on a new business to talk about the ribbon cutting and.
Yeah, new business.
Katie.
Hello, everyone. Um, all is well in finance. We sent out tax bills. Those went out the door beginning of the week. Um, successful payroll. Let's, business as usual. There's nothing really to report, listen.
Thank you, Katie.
Chuck, we're here. You'd give a much longer dissertation on that.
Most people tend.
So feel free to show up every week.
Chantel, how are you?
I am fine, thank you. Um, so the census at the nursing home is a hundred and thirty-two. At our assisted living, we are at forty-seven. Um, no numbers to report in regards to outbreak and then just some general kind of items. The pie contest is today at one o'clock. We have ongoing raffles by the switchboard. It's a dollar a ticket. Um, that a lot of local businesses and businesses in the area donated to, um. Fisher Coils parking spot is up for grabs. I think it has the most tickets so far.
Really?
Uh, but you can do that and we'll pull those on Sunday and announce the winners Monday. We are currently in the middle of our annual skills fair. Um, we have to take it down today for tomorrow and then it'll go back up. But the theme is around the world and one of our social workers, Amanda, did a really beautiful job. Each table is, um, represented for a different country. And one of the components for nursing homes is around cultural care and cultural competency, and she made a beautiful. Um, relevant to nursing homes, caring for individuals in the different cultures. Um, and those differences, so we are underway in that and the only other pieces that I wanted to kind of talk about is our plan correction for our survey. Our compliance date was this week, um, however, because of the government shutdown. They can't look at it, so, uh, didn't get the link that we would typically get to submit. I did reach out to, um, Christie Holtz at the survey office. So that we can show, should it be needed, um, the compliance and I would be able to fax it over, she said, so we will at least fax it over, however, they can't do anything with it. Until we are not in shutdown and we, this is the longest, so I, I don't know the answer and Aka and some of the other groups don't either. Um, there's a compliance date, otherwise it could impact, uh, payment, that'll come in. But we don't know how it's gonna impact because of this either, so we, um, as an industry are trying to get answers and have no clarity. So, uh, we have that and then we submitted the last of the documentation for the heightened, um, security survey for the assisted living that was requested. But again, we won't know if it's sufficient or not. Because they can't be reviewed until we're not in a shutdown. So, stay tuned.
Well, thank you for that.
And the Alzheimer's Walk is on there.
Yes. It is a great, the Alzheimer's Walk, I mean, this has been a lot of lead up to all this is fundraising for Alzheimer's, but, um, the Walk is a really great event and. Um, having participated in it for the past three years, it does get a lot of, uh, Rockingham County community support. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of. Participants, it's a nice, uh.
Where is the Walk?
Unfortunately.
Here's, here's the island.
This year's Pierce Island, yeah.
Nobody signed you up?
No, thank you.
We should have made a more, to be honest, we should have coiled a walk there. I mean, I did a scarecrow.
Well, you can make a question and I will second of it because I've already signed up for it.
All you need is a purple shirt now.
Have done it for years past. It's a nice support and it's nice to represent Rockham County.
Looking to be a little chilly this year, but.
It's okay. We're a red horse. We're new here. We're new in Goodyear. We're hoagie.
This is the same person who rode her bike over a bridge and was blown over and it was cold out, so. You're okay with walking.
Um, with that, take it away, Jason.
Uh, let's see, apparently a hundred and seventy-eight in house today. Um, Central Square, we are also using Central Square as well, too. Our train, the trainer, uh, starts on November seventeenth. Uh, our goal live is in December. So it's gonna be a lot of learning for our staff as well, too, because we're switching from a, the. Ex-gym manager, gym assistant to the Central Square. Once it's opened up, there will be some stuff that the sheriff's department will go share, like, um, transports and those kinds of things. When all these towns are equipped as well, when they start initial booking, they can get pushed to us, so we actually have some stuff already started ahead of time, so it's gonna be a lot of neat. Functions, again, it's gonna be bumps in the roads and we will figure it out as we go along. Uh, so that's exciting, too, because we got to curtail where we wanted to with our reports. I will say, we are, we will be having, because I pushed on a four-facing portal. We're able to go on once a person's been arraigned and go and look and see if they're, if they're mugshot, their, um, charges and their, um, bail, which is gonna cut down. A lot of our phone calls.
Is that, um, cause like there's the inmate locator, the, a bind system that we, that a lot of people, it's helpful, we utilize now.
Bind systems to be going to, this will be in, in, in addition to, yeah. So they get the mugshot and everything against, especially like, uh. News, news art, so it's a curmudgeon, that will go right on there. Those type of things, or even just in public, hey, what's the person's bail? We get that all the time and once we push out, hey, you can go on there and take a look at it anytime you want.
It is good for victim information, like.
I mean, there's no, we should brought bind program. It's for victim, it's for victims. Anybody can sign up. Does not speak for victims. Um, to s- see where inmates, they, they fit there inside of a facility. Uh, you decide to be, um, so if they leave, uh, you know, bracelet or, or they're just released or anything else. You get notified? You can. You can be notified by phone if you want a phone call, email if you wanted to, a text, anywhere you want, uh, to be notified that they're out. Um, and it's just a little backstory. Rocky Ham County was about seventeen years, was only one that had it in this state. And was paying for it for many, many years. Dave Barry was a superintendent down in Sullivan County, came along and said, hey, I wanna work with mine and script created to do a grant. I came and get it all, all the counts and they used Rocky Ham County's data to get that done, then the grant was. Able to do a grant, all ten counties came on board. Then got pushed to state to take this over, um, because it's really a state function. All ten counties are on. All the, um, the state prisons are on and all the state-run, um, colleges are also on this system. You know, I'm talking like hundreds, small thousands of dollars, but the, the save, the, the, the impact it has for victims is amazing.
And that's just it. I mean, it is, uh, victims' access to information if someone's sentenced to incarceration. Um, you know, it's not clear whether they're gonna get good time or not, and so that getting that for a lot of victims, there's a lot of, um. Security and comfort in knowing, okay, this is their release date, this is, we're getting that notification on their release date so they can plan and, you know, put things in place and just.
Or even when all of a sudden the motion is very important and all of a sudden their, the bail is changed.
Yeah.
You know, and they are all of a sudden a P R or low bailer out, they get that instant notification where you won't if you just thought they were getting out at a certain time, so the program is. Really amazing, so again, who's Rocky Ham County was the first to state and pay for it for many, many years, but now. You don't pay for, pay for a state, so.
Wait, it's like one of the few examples, I, I have like upshifting laws.
We've gotten well downshifting than anything else. That is true. Um, so, Central Square coming in, uh. Uh, C I T, critical incident training, um, we've signed up two for this next round and Epping and a two be held in Portsmouth. Put on by NAMI. What that is, is it's a forty-hour intense training class to deal with people that are in mental health crisis. Now, I took it years ago. It's fantastic course. Is offered at no cost. Um, we will be sending as many people as we can, but we're starting now and each year. My goal is that we will have people trained in as a C I T trainer and when we have a person in crisis, we will call it. On staff, the C I T person to work with that, that, you, but he has a unique set of skills, uh, to deal with that. Uh, I've seen it work. It is, it's a really good program, um, so we're, we're very excited about that. We had Chief Goldstein, um, who was retired chief out of Franklin. Uh, um, this past Thursday, he's done over forty years in law enforcement, or forty-seven years. Um, and the sheriff's department, when he retired, brought him on and he is. Has two masters, a P H D, um, in all like mental health and does so much mental health stuff for first responders. Not just first responders, but those that work in like our admin area, because one of the classes that teaches is, um, somebody walks by. I walked by Jude's office and I just saw maybe a death that goes on. You, you don't have a doctor to support me. Do you feel for me? So there's a class on that, so we had him come through a divisional meeting and, um, yes, here for an hour and a half. Could've stayed longer, but we're really good dialogue. Lot of classes we're, gonna work putting together, might become part of the Sis- uh, Sisum team that were maybe looking at that as well, so. I was happy that he's there and it makes a resource that this county has. We talked about the amphitheater as well. There are some classes that we wanna put in the amphitheater. For the county, like we said, the, those administrative positions that still see trauma, that is stuff, how maybe that will help you. Um, to other counties coming in and dealing with some of the things that they deal with, so that was fantastic. Other things going on, um, is. Fifteen years now, maybe a little longer, I've tried to put together a supervisor's training academy for corrections. There isn't one. Wasn't really a position where I could wanna do it, but couldn't do it. Being a position where I oversee the academy now and I work closely with a trainers group. Um, I tasked the trainers group to get this done, as a some actual true supervisory academy, but in conjunction with primax. So they've come up with, it's called locked-in leadership, be going on in March and October, it's cohorts, four days. First and last day taught by corrections, the two middle days taught by primax. Very intense stuff on how to be a leader, how to transition from being that officer. To a supervisor, um, risk management, um, valuations, the true things that. You've done a terrible, have you, right, honest, terrible job of training people to become a supervisor. You get a couple of the training, on the floor you go. We tried to work them as a go. This is what I've been looking for for a very long time and all the superintendents have to, and they're, we couldn't be more static. They presented to us finally last week. We gave it a blessing. It's gonna take off, minimum of twelve, twelve people there, maximum of twenty. I guarantee we're gonna be filling this up with all, we're so young and supervised, so just.
Can you imagine, where is it, Vegas?
Primax, primax, Vegas, it's nice down there. So I just, so proud of that, the trainers group of what they've done, grew up together, um, and, um, really looking forward to. Down the court, but there is follow-up. They do follow-up after like six months, so. Did this work? Wasn't helping you? Was it effective? So we can curtail this to make sure it really works for supervisors, so I think. Over the next course of years, we're gonna see an improvement of supervisors and how to even handle discipline, those kinds of things that just, it's like. That being said, I'll stop talking. Appreciate it.
So, when you talk about the mental health thing, we were in events in Chester, Pat was there, the county attorney was there with the sheriff and all this, a bunch of. Sheets from different towns, and they talked about the mental health and they basically talked about a lot about some of the old timers. Some of the old guys, they didn't have the mental health in their academy, although they have it now in their academy, so some of these other guys weren't educated to walk into. Some person that has mental health issues walking down the street, so. I think it's a good resource and the sheriff grabbed that guy, I didn't know, forty-seven years, but I knew he was a long time.
Chief Goldstein.
Officer, but he's real educated, honestly, that's good.
I encourage you, if you, if he would love to come talk to you, I, I, he'd love to, hearing his story. He's seventy-three years old, he's a skydiving instructor. He's amazing individual stuff that he's done, does with Dr. Sawyer. Um, a lot and talks and does classes with her.
Yeah.
Um, so he would be a, a wonderful, he's already here, you know, we're rocking for him to down and talk to him, I just. Right there.
Yeah, that's wonderful. What a great resource. And so great that we're taking on this, you know, it's like so, so important, so important. All right, Nelson.
Um, just to let you know, the Halloween scarecrow contest ends on the thirtieth with an announcement on the thirty-first. Um, I wanna thank the board for allowing us to host the years of service and keep that going. We are starting to receive some comments our way. About those attendees and how much they appreciated it, um, and so I think that's these volumes and I hope we'll continue doing that. Um, the N H A C conference is coming up soon, just to remind you that, um, Monday night is the. Black and gold is the theme, um, that's the fiftieth anniversary celebration evening. I've been working pretty diligently with, um, Hillary Snyder, we're co-chairs for this year's event. Um, and I'm working with her on a couple of things along with the group that, um, is doing the sponsorship. The county basket is done and I did wanna thank for those, uh. You know, uh, folks that donated to the basket. Thank you for those additional items, but I finished that up the other day, so we're putting it together. I am working now with Jason, um, with one of his staff to kind of help me boost up the sponsorship basket, because that will be on the night of the first. It's a big event on the first, where all sponsors will be there and we're hosting, um. An hour, hour, hour and a half there where everybody will be congregating and then we'll raffle that off, uh, no cost to that for those to put in. It's part of the event. I'm working with Jason on the supplies for the bags that'll be given out at the registration table. We've, I've gotten the approval from. The N H C group about, uh, ordering some stuff, so that's all set and we're doing that, but we're gonna have to bring it on up. Um, we'll be there, I'll be there Sunday morning, Hillary and a couple others around eight-thirty. Unloading and then starting to stuff all these bags for people coming in that afternoon to register. Uh, yeah, I didn't tell you that yet, so anyway, we'll be up there at eight-thirty, um, unloading. But to dovetail off of the mental health, then, um, I would say the, uh, human resources affiliate group that we have every month, um, which is a part of all of the counties. It is, and mental health has been a concern for. It is, and mental health has been a concern for us and different counties have done some stuff through their HR. We have a, a session that was important that we had on the docket for the NHAC. So then we'll be a mental health workshop on nearby someone coming in to speak to that, because I think we're all facing it in different ways with our. Own employees with different things that are going on and how we approach things that are happening internally with them. And I think that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you, Alison. All right, um, we'll move right into new business, old business, business, first we have a walk in. For Chubb Commercial Insurance, for an off cycle one.
Uh, T twenty six oh four eighty four payable to Chubb. For an amount of eight thousand five hundred seventy five dollars, we recommend that the senior director.
Second.
Discussion. This is insurance for our solar arrival. All right, um, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Breland. Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, um, I think now it's like a good time to take up the, um, our ribbon cutting ceremony, so. Um, it'll be set on, I guess, set on November seventh.
I think November seventh is a good date.
Okay, so Friday, no.
I wonder why I thought the seventeen, but I, I thought sort of noon was that second week, as you know, it's.
That's the Friday of the first week, so it's November first.
Correct.
Uh, I communicated with the governor's office and she is traveling, I think, most of the month of, on November. And is unavailable, uh, sent to regards that don't change the date for us. So we'll miss her, but she was invited.
Great.
And, um, so I, I, I have perfectly good clear go ahead to.
Previously discussed doing it at ten AM, is that still everybody's seems reasonable?
Well, is that relative to the catering that we might have?
So if we want, we were trying to limit catering, do you know, I guess, like, I mean, it's, uh. That Prime Care is willing to cater it is, I mean, it would be really nice. Um, it seems like a opportunity that we should, um.
In that case, maybe it should be closer to lunchtime or who you want to, what you guys want, I'll call them in the.
So, do, do we wanna make it at eleven? Yeah.
I think eleven.
So we've now said November seventh at eleven AM, we're gonna consult with Prime Care because and.
Looking for lunch.
Um, lunch like or. Have your doors or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Free pound losses.
Okay, and a cake.
Not bacon.
And a cake. Yeah, nice, so. So now we can.
No, go ahead.
I just, we need to talk about give, getting invitations out to individuals. And so we should probably, um, first and foremost, contact Cheryl and ask her to reach out to. Um, the delegation. Yes, that would be great. Um, we also, I think it's important, maybe we could, when we see Cheryl on Friday, ask to reach out to former state reps, because I know. Um, like for instance, I, um. You know, ran into a former state rep who is not serving, but was at the forefront and would very much like to attend, so.
Okay, so, uh, we might want to differentiate who was invited to attend. And who was being invited to. Actually cut the ribbon, you know, to stand ceremonially, because we could have fifty people there all thinking they're gonna stand on the stage and. That's okay if we're planned for that and we kinda have a.
I think we should figure out though, that these are just attendees. Um, to the.
They're invited to come and join us.
Figure out the, like, I don't, I think, you know, we can figure out who we want actually to be, like, with, with the scissors. How big those scissors will be.
That was my next question. And scissors.
We can.
Oh, your order.
Playlist on it. Is there any surprise here?
They're not invited, people do show.
We should, the question is, do we wanna, is it open to the public, I mean, I think, I think we should. And do we wanna post it in the, you know, in the newspaper or anything of that nature?
Website.
On our website, yeah, maybe just on our website, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't know that we wanna promote it, but I think the public, anybody who wants to attend.
Should be able to attend.
Yeah.
So. I think a hundred is about the right.
That's just, I just, I'm working with.
I mean, it's hard to, because I think a large number of the delegation will attend, right? And then if.
So we're going to give tours that day.
Where we.
And, and that, I, we haven't discussed this, but I would imagine that members of the delegation specifically, if they come and they haven't. Yet had a chance to take a look at the building, everyone's gonna wanna walk in.
I feel like we should just limit it to the vestibule, like the front entry, and just, just like where we talk about the free space before. I don't think we should get into, because we, like, there's moving, there are things, we're in transition, I think we should. People can see the auditorium, the front entry. Yeah.
Right, so county attorney will already be up there, she's really concerned about seizure sort of.
So we're not going to be giving code that day, that, I think that they, that expectation should be known.
Established that, I mean, and I think it's like, you could come in, I think we have enough. Space in the front entry and see the auditorium and. I mean, I think you need to, and we have to have the bathrooms available. Right?
Right.
So we'll just keep that front, well, that full front area, that will be that, and then.
And will we gather on the steps with the ribbon to cut for a photo op?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, another thing too is. Norma Major is the auditorium, his name, that's Norma Major's.
We should invite him, the family, yeah.
I'll get, then, I'll get you his wife's information.
I think Cheryl already has her, could be waiting for the call.
Right.
Cheryl's been in regular communication with her.
Will we have a separate ceremony for? The auditorium. On the same day, or?
Uh, I don't think we need a separate for the auditorium.
Well, because we've dedicated to.
We should, we could just reference it in our, as part of a little speech of the ribbon cutting in conjunction and then do photos afterwards or other.
So then, let's make sure we invite.
Yeah.
That family, right?
I think Jude indicated that they're already on.
Already on, yeah, yeah, okay, good.
Our point of contact, so we'll put it, post it on our website and then we'll, um, get in touch with Cheryl. Um, we'll see Cheryl on Friday, we can discuss this, the date, the information, and focus on. Getting all the delegation invited and then former delegates who, and do we wanna do like former commissioners who?
Yeah.
Um, you know, who've been working on this for many years.
Obviously, very interested in attending, they.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, is Bill Monty gonna be available?
He is, I actually saw him today, I think he's leaving for Florida next week, he just got back from Ireland, he was ten years younger. He's, I think he told me he was going to Florida next week, he may not be here, in fact, I think he told us he wasn't gonna be, did he?
Jude, do you think you can, um, make sure that all of the construction and architect team is?
Yes, absolutely.
Are we missing? Of course, yeah. Is there anyone else, I mean, let's get our heads together to make sure we, uh, don't miss anyone.
How, how text, and teach church, who's the, who's one of the stars of this process?
Yeah, that'd be wonderful, that'd be wonderful. I mean, we want it to be an exclusive event, because it did take a lot of, it's a village.
What, we'll have catering in the lobby area, kinda someplace?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Right, it's perfect.
Are you planning on inviting any, um, other county commissioners wanna be here, or?
I mean, I think that's where we publish it, but I don't think we need to specifically invite it's.
Yeah, I agree. I would. Not looking to.
I should invite the twenty seven, I'm gonna make him jealous. So this is how he was supposed to do it.
This is how it's done, right?
What type of invitation?
Nothing, just email and gold.
Email.
Yeah. Evite, just. Delegating, and all the people that we agree.
Do a, just like.
We have the one like the format of the one for the, uh, swearing in.
That, that's gonna be a lot of work.
No, yeah, I think you can just do a template on like, I. Yeah, or if you give her something, she can put together how you keep reviewing it and just analyze that.
Okay, I have a couple of my publisher. Reviewing the minutes that we just approved. It, it reminded me that we had discussed, uh, potential restrictions on Zoom. And I've given some thought, and I think that we, since the new building is gonna be so much more. Public friendly for people to attend, that I agree with, you're going to. A request to attend by Zoom, that you make a specific request, then Leila can send out. The, the link, rather than publishing the link so that every, uh, uh, person can just go, because I would encourage them. To come to the meeting, it's easily public access, here, no, we're kinda in the back. But it's not quite as convenient. That's gonna be so much more convenient, I don't, I would like to encourage people to all come in person, especially our department heads. Uh, this stuff going on, come, and then it be the exception. To have Zoom, but still have it available, and we're gonna publish it anyway, so.
The great hybrid, I, I think it's.
Something. Well, they're gonna be in the same building, so I hope they just come down.
You guys will have to come over, I mean, you're involved, they said, but the rest of you will just come over here.
I really like that idea, because you're, I mean, it, it adds a security layer. But it doesn't restrict access for people who may have mobility issues or like if there's a conflict with work. So you still make it as accessible as possible for the public, but puts that security, I think it's, I think it's great.
Hi, Brent, yeah, and sitting on the school board and chair of elementary high school, that's exactly what we do. We don't have people on, just waiting on Zoom, it's, it's. Screen or is it up out there? If somebody had mobility issues or anything else, we would make accommodations, or somebody wants to do a presentation, which we've had, we would. And specific, our IT person would specifically, your case, allow them in, but we don't have just people online, only because of. That would happen, and, and other those kind of things, just exposed.
I think Robin was really smartly encouraging that as well, that was kind of the model she was sourcing.
And you brought it up before, on the minutes, it, it was your original idea, but I. Hadn't wrapped my arms around it, my brain around it yet, and I looked at it and I said, yeah, I think this is.
Well, I gave it to you.
And I have one other. Okay, so I spoke with, uh, and received a proposal from Silverthorn. That is looking for some, uh, assistance on the drivers. So they have been receiving money to receive, to pay for the two drivers that they have. They have the vehicles, but, uh, they needed money for the drivers. And they have been, that money is all set. Till the end of the year, and that's when the, the program ends. They, uh, they've proposed a plan to us. Where they're going to charge people a small amount of money, ten or fifteen dollars for rides to come and go, to. Drive and to be transported home, so they're sharing some of the costs, and they're looking for us. To supplement the rest of it, so that they can continue their work. Bottom line is that they're looking for forty four thousand four hundred dollars. That will cover them till the end of our fiscal, fiscal year. And then, then there's the discussion of eighty eight thousand eight hundred dollars. That might go into our budget next year, uh, for this, so, uh, I sent a copy. It was at the last minute, um, I, I proposed that we put it on the agenda for next week to maybe a full discussion.
Well, look at where we can draw from, cause I think we.
If I can just introduce to you, Chuck and I actually just finalized all the information related to the pilot to send to you, I'm just waiting for the last sign off. And that would give you off of the current participations and what the estimated cost would be as well as different scenarios. And that might just help. That, and then in the bottom of it, we put in our current spend of our current line.
Is there leftover money?
We're only a few months in, but as of last year there was, so. We gathered all the information, because when Christine came and presented, the ask was, what would it cost that some of these individuals would be able to continue? I got the last of the information needed yesterday of how frequently they go, cause it's a per day, so I needed to know that. Allison goes four days and Drew goes two, so all of that's compiled, it's in a sheet, I tried to make it as. Non Chantel confusion as possible. Um, and Chuck added a couple tweaks to it with some proposals, and I'm just waiting for that last okay, and then we were hoping to get that to you by tomorrow. And that would give you information, and the last piece has our current budget. I can add in quickly what was left from last year and even a trend over the last couple of years, if that would be helpful. And, um, what we anticipated our estimated cost would be to support the individuals. Um, to be able to continue that otherwise wouldn't have been able to. So Chuck and I are actually hoping to get that to you this week to have a agenda for next week.
Great, so then we can have this discussion, be educated when we may have this discussion, great, that's fantastic.
I'm really pleased with the, 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 uh, model that Silverthorn has put through. And I like it much better than the model that we are participating with Easter Seals. Uh, Silverthorn has a shared cost, we supplement to get to, uh. Like twenty five dollars a day and, and they're coming up with Medicaid. With, with Easter Seals, we're servicing fewer individuals and more amount of money per individual. So I guess I just like to promote the Silverthorn model.
Yeah.
Of how they're behaving and with the hopes that maybe somebody in. Sandown or Hampstead. Uh, would open another one, um.
We're like, we gotta pizza place.
You don't have these streetlights, we found that out last night.
I did see a lot of people turning around to forget, uh, I would like them to come in too to see the data. You know, and we'd have them come in and give us a, a little bit of their spiel on the drive. Yeah, I mean, I know they're telling you, I don't think they should come in. And, and I know that you'll get, I'd like them to, we don't see it, we just give them money, I'd like to see them tomorrow, tell us what's happening. I support.
Invite them, we put it on the agenda next week, I'll make sure they're invited in.
Before we bring them in, I think it would be better to have the data that, I'm not, and I.
We can decide what we, where, where we want to go first.
Are, and then we can have them, I, if we wanna do it the following week, I, I think that's great, but I'd rather like get our data. Because then we know what questions to ask, like until we have our discussion and analyze the data, I don't think we're in the best position to hear from them. Present questions.
They're hoping for a decision before December first, so that they can give their res, their friends. Uh, is how they refer to them.
Yeah.
Uh, at least thirty days notice if there's a change.
Right.
I support, you know, the thing is this, you know, next year they want more money, but now it's, the bill is, is going up now.
Yeah, well, you know, when I'd. I like supporting this group, I, I would, in fact, I was thinking about that, cause you know, now we're just adding eighty eight thousand dollars potentially to the. To the budget, well, I, I, I wouldn't mind taking some of that away from some of the other charities that we're supporting, and specifically to lean towards. The assisted, you know, assisting the elder care, you know, adult daycare. But we can, yeah, the non-county specials, but, uh, we can talk about that later.
The current one doesn't fall under non-county. I'm gonna say, cause this one falls under.
We want to support that, well, history will show that years and years ago. Judge Wagland, Judge NATO come in, and drug court was gonna fail. And they kind of said, we need you guys to keep it afloat, for a few months, we need, I think that price back then was seventy eight thousand. Well, the three coaches were, Commissioner Paul, Commissioner Paul, Commissioner Brad, and I said, yes, the seventy eight thousand, guess what, the following year. It became Rocket Hand County Drug Court. Because the seventy eight went to three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, buildings. So I just, I'm getting a little nervous, I support them and I definitely, you guys know my take on non-medical daycare, I'm just. Sometimes we should fight that again, I'm nervous, but that's my take, I support it, I want you guys to know, I, I support it, but I just don't want it to be. Rocket Hand County Silverthorn daycare.
Right, right, that's all.
The IDNed.
Yeah, yeah, or IDN, yeah.
No, I mean, I think it's like, listen, we're gonna go in with eyes wide open and that's why we're gonna get the data, I mean, to, that's why I think we should delay a week. So that we can.
Chuck actually just emailed me as we were talking with, he's okay with it, so I'm gonna just pull the trends from the last couple of years, so that you can see what's left. I'll add that and I'll hand over to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your efforts. Okay, that's good, new business.
That's, I'm done with new business.
I believe there was a, the time capsule was left on attached this morning.
Right here.
Okay, that's your time capsule.
Fantastic.
Fill her up.
Okay.
That reminds me, um, for anybody who hasn't submitted their little verbiage, but I do need a picture of someone maybe still in here.
That's me, this guy.
I did, I did the picture, not the paragraph.
You did, you have not.
Wait, I did send my paragraph?
No, you did not. No, I need it Friday.
I was told, I had like three or four sentences.
We have it, we already have it, the newsletter's cracked and whatever verbiage you give, we just are gonna insert. Um, I think a couple pictures have been inserted already for those that are still waiting on, so. If you could, that would be great. And then we can have that for next week, uh, next week, cause I know. I saw that at the time. It'll, oh, it'll go to Leila, it'll be ready, it's, you can roll up the slide ready. Okay.
It's big too.
Fantastic. All right. Um, public comment. Is there any other public comments?
Eki, did you wanna say anything?
She's bearded, so she can't say anything yet.
Maybe she signed on, because Kathy signed off or there's anything, so. Hearing none, we'll enter into non-public and I'll, uh, may I please have a motion, Commissioner Tombrilla?
We need a motion to the non-public for the gift, our same ninety one dash eight four oh three, number two, A personnel. C reputation and C pending claim.
Second.
Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tombrilla?
Yes.
And I vote yes. There now. Good afternoon. Now, we are, uh, out of non-public session. I'm gonna turn the floor to Commissioner Tombrilla to make a motion relative to our non-public sessions.
I'll make a motion to seal the non-public, um, minutes indefinitely. We have five personnel items. Uh, one through five are gonna be all sealed, because it's determined the intelligence of diff, information likely affect. Adversely, the reputation of any personnel that are in the board this month.
Second.
Just to clarify, that's sealed indefinitely, because we don't have, there's no ending to, um.
We don't have an end date.
And it's, and it's reputational. Um, as clarified, on, um, any further discussion, on the motion, Commissioner Tombrilla.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have one other motion to make.
I'll make a motion to approve a paid, meaning effective October twenty four, two thousand twenty five, the long term care employee. PD, as recommended by the senior director of long term care services and the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tombrilla, and I vote yes. Okay, we do have one final.
Make a motion and burn.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
We're here, thank you so much, everyone, have a nice week.